Staff here that are all the tech people, so we think we've got it. I will call the meeting to order, which we did call at 5 o'clock, but due to audio difficulties, we will now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Here.
Tippett?
Here.
Commissioner Wisman?
Present.
Mr. Sauer?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here. We do have a quorum present. Thank you all for being with us, and we're sorry for the technical difficulties. This is a special work session. Remind everyone, we are limited to the meeting agenda that we have in front of us. And as many of us know and participated on over the weekend, we had a very nice march on Frankfurt. And that was organized by Katima McMillan, Jordan Smith, Trish Freeman, Natalie Cleveland, Barbara Petty, James McGraw, and Eric Jarboe. And I plan to recognize them in the future in person when that is available, when we can do that. But tonight, we just wanted to tell everyone in the community who participated and all of our folks that helped with that, city staff who did so much on that behind the scenes. We appreciate all that and very proud of these young folks for the efforts that they put together. Such a big event, and we showed the world that Frankfurt is a community of love and peace, and we can do things the right way. So we will have more on that at a future meeting when we can have them join us somehow in person. So I'll move on to the next item, discussion items.
Oh, may I? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Waldrich, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Waldrich.
Oh, I just wanted to say that the young people did a great job as I was helping with, being a co-coordinator of this event. They were eager and ready to get something done in Frankfurt. They called me on a Monday and said they were having their event on a Monday, and I was planning one actually on Friday. And this is where people come together and work together. We spoke and we decided, I said, well, why don't we have your event on Friday and I just give you full support from City Commission and making sure cities behind you and helping them through. So I really enjoyed working with this group. I look forward to working with this group in the near future as well. But I think that all the planning and the community came out, made this a successful event. I was very proud of the community. Thank you so much. I'm just, I was just really honored and overjoyed by our community and the support. And thank you for all of you that came out and supported as well.
Mayor May?
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for adding that to the agenda. I'd ask you to recognize those individuals. I was very, very proud of the way our community reacted to it and was proud to march with the folks and really just wanted to give credence particularly to Katima, who dreamed up that event and was the principal organizer to pull it together. She did our community proud, so I just wanted to thank you for recognizing them.
Absolutely. And again, our staff did a tremendous job with everything, and we had police officers and other staff folks walking with us, emergency management, police, fire, EMS, public works. I'm trying to think, I hope I didn't leave anybody out, but again, we're going to come back and we will do a proper, more detailed recognition where we can get that. Thanks, Commissioner Wisman, for calling it to our attention to get that on today. We appreciate it. Anyone else? I apologize, because I have you all in three different places here, so the sound comes up. All right, first item is budget process update. I'll call on the city manager for a brief explanation on the budget process. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do have a couple of citizen comments. I know, would you rather do those now or later on?
Who's going to, do you have those? You're going to read those? Or who's going to read those?
I think she might have them.
City clerk, okay, please do. Thank you. Thank you, city solicitor.
The first comment we have, this is just for informational purposes only. This was sent at, for the last meeting, and it was an accidental oversight that the comment was not read. And this is from Lisa Unger, and she said, "I am in support of the city moving forward with the 2020 recreational trail program grant application. This trail expansion would make access to Cove Spring Park much easier from the Wilkinson Boulevard Walking Trail."
Thank you.
And then the next comment we have pertains to today's meeting. This is from Phyllis Vincent, and her email says, "Many people across the nation speak in opposition to any pullback of the police force in enforcement. Let the police, let the police do their job equally for all. Sure, there are bad apples in every position of our society. Get rid of them, as was done in Minneapolis, and do not punish the police, who are doing their jobs as professionally as they can. For Frankfurt, I haven't heard of any complaints about our police. Leave them alone and encourage them and back them up. I want and expect law and order. The first duty of government at any level is to protect its citizens, all of its citizens. Please act accordingly."
Thank you. We thank our citizens for those comments. Next item would be the budget process update with our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've been speaking with Mayor. We've got, we've added a new addition, obviously, May 13th, new finance director, Alicia Boyd. She has been tremendously helpful, along with Angie Dispanet, in getting this budget, starting to get it close to wrapped up. We've sent you off some draft documents, so you all can start reviewing. I've asked the mayor if we could have our special call and do a presentation this Friday, midday. I'm hoping we can do it in two hours, but you know, if the mayor's agreeable, could we call it maybe 10 to 2 a.m. or 10 to 2 p.m.? And I'd like to have it at City Hall in the commission chamber. Anybody that would like to participate via video would be welcome, and it would just be easier for staff to reference PowerPoint and do their presentation at City Hall. That's the only update I have. If you, you know, you've got a lot of draft documents on revenues and budgets and sewer budgets and general fund budgets and capital budgets. If you have questions, please shoot them out to us. Let us try to answer them before Friday. We, or have the answers available by Friday. But I just, I just wanted to give you all an update on that.
All right, thank you, and we'll follow up.
I'm sorry, Keith, what was that date again? I'm sorry, Mayor, what was that date again?
Okay, and thank you. Also, I guess, welcome our new finance director. We haven't had a chance to all meet her in person yet, but I, we're glad we've got her. Thank you. Next would be recycling program cost comparison. Do we have a staff member? Are you going to do that, city manager?
Katie Beard is on the line, and I think she's got a, something to put up on the screen. I think Bobby is assisting with that.
We've got it. Standby, please.
Yes, I've got a few slides. It'll be very brief, and I'll take questions as well, of course. So I think Bobby's going to make me presenter, so I can share my screen.
You should be able to do it right now.
It's still grayed out. It's not, there it is. There it comes. So last month, the commission asked us to come up with a cost comparison of our two options that were currently available to us, which is the Lexington Recycle Center and West Rock Recycling, which is in Louisville. This is just a brief comparison of the two. In Lexington, this is a three-year average over the last three years. It's ended up costing about $20 a ton. This is after revenue. There are some upfront costs. There are surcharges for different items, such as glass, or if there's trash mixed in, and there is a $50 processing fee and a $7 marketing fee, and then we get revenues back when products are sold. So this is after all of that, it averages out to about $20 a ton over the past three years. Our average has been about 1,700 tons. Our current contract with Republic includes a $229 fee per load to go to Lexington and 304 per load to go to West Rock in Louisville. We average about 196 loads, so those are all the numbers that these cost comparisons are based on. You can see the totals for each, 79,000 for Lexington and 124,000 for West Rock. These are estimates, again, these numbers can change. The cost per ton can fluctuate each year, as well as the revenue. The landfill savings was calculated on considering that glass and paper, some paperboard products and some plastics are going to the landfill now that West Rock will actually accept. So that's a landfill savings of 7,200, making the West Rock option about a $38,000 increase per year. Some of the considerations in deciding between which ones, which place to go to, we consider that Lexington provides the revenues, as I already mentioned. So sometimes you can end up getting a, getting profit, like in 2017, we earned $25 a ton back in revenues. Past three years, we've had a minimum of $13 a ton and a maximum of $26 a ton, which was in 2019, as the market changes. Lexington, we can send aluminum, metal, cardboard, and plastic that we collect curbside. We can send dry, clean paper that we collect at our Rouse Avenue location, and they're currently not accepting glass or paperboard. Some other considerations from West Rock, the variable disposal cost, that $38 could They don't provide revenues. They are a private business. Collecting of glass can add a little bit of maintenance cost to our equipment, and then they do accept aluminum, metal, cardboard, plastic, paper, glass, and paperboard. So just about everything can be accepted at West Rock. Again, I wanted to keep it very brief and take your all's questions and have a further discussion.
Does that conclude your PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, that does.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Director, Commissioner Wisman?
Everyone. You know, it's unfortunate, we just got this 20 minutes before our meeting started for me to be able to come up with anything here. Would have liked to have had more time, but can you tell us, you know, our solid waste coordinator, Katie, had indicated that for the last several years, our recycling rate was about 54% of our community, and that that has, with the fluctuations in the Lexington Recycling Center and their multiple closures of recently, that has dropped off significantly, maybe as much as half recently. And of course, in your numbers, what you're looking at with your presentation, there are still limits, great number of limits in the types of plastics that we send to Lexington and materials generally, and even what we're sending, they're still not able to do anything with some of those materials. I had a different figure that last year, we were paying about $31 per ton for our recycling. I don't know if that is more accurate. I realize you did an average, but obviously, the most recent year seems to indicate that costs are going up at the Lexington Center quite significantly, which brought on the basis for touring these facilities and trying to figure out a better solution. Can you give us any, any more information about the most recent activity, I suppose is a way to say it, and the costs, instead of a multi-year average? Do you have any of that at the ready at all?
Yeah. Let me pull it up here. I've got 2019, we, let's see, we spent $33,500, averaging 2608 a ton. 2018 was 26,406, averaging 1383. 2017 was the, was the year where we had a revenue of 48.6. Byron is, I believe he's on the line. I don't know if he can expand on that anymore than I can. Hey, Byron, thanks. Can you expand on that at all, or is that pretty much a summary?
Yeah, that's a pretty good summary of the last few years of it, of the money that we've actually made from the sale of material and what it has been costing us the last two years.
Have we seen a drop in the percentage of people recycling?
At our highest rate, we were at 54%, but that was in 2015. In 18, we were at about a 46%, 47%. In '20, we have none of the full cap. There was the thing, go point on my empire, it's pretty strange.
All I'm getting is...
But just the spot checks that I've done, we're at about a 38%. We're actually right up...
Hey, Byron, do you, do you have your phone on and the meeting on?
If so, you're good.
No, I'm actually in my truck.
Okay, okay, good. We thought, okay, I was just asking that question.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
City manager has a question?
Can you hear?
I might suggest that since they just got this information, that Commissioner Wisman worked with Katie with follow-up questions, and during Katie's...
Starting route to 130 Court Street Drive.
During Katie's budget presentation on Friday, she could have the follow-up information, and if this is a change we all want to make during the budget presentation, be a great time for you all to make that change, and it will require more money, but we could have, we could answer these follow-up questions by Friday, and you all can make a decision.
Who's on the phone with the...
We're working on it.
Katie, follow-up question, then. What else? Is it Byron?
Hello?
Byron?
I'm here.
Can you mute the phone?
The annual increase or potential increase, what we send to the landfill. I have a suspicion that we could greatly offset the amount of landfill by encouraging and revamping our recycling program. Our community is expressing greatly to me that they want to be able to put everything in recycling, which is why I've been so adamant for the Louisville option, since they accept basically everything and try to find markets for it. I think we have an opportunity for some type of hybrid model here, where we can still send high valuable items to Lexington, but then stockpile those other things and send to Louisville potentially. But 220 tons a year, is that it? Is that based just primarily on glass weight, or?
It is.
That would...
Yeah. Is that right, Byron? Just a rough estimate of glass, yeah.
Yes. Even at our highest point in recycling, we were still, the numbers in garbage were still pretty well lining up how they are now. We've increased, garbage has increased greatly the last five years. We've gone from another, from eight, you know, from 100 ton a week, now we're up to about 150 ton a week. It's just, I think, the nature of people, the stuff, the items and stuff that they're actually using and not doing anything with, just throwing everything away.
Can I answer your question?
And the, the problem, the one problem I see with the hybrid program is if we try to send material to both locations, we don't really have enough room in our current facility to stockpile a lot of items, and we don't have the equipment to actually separate the items after they're brought in curbside.
Right. City manager had a... Since we only had 20 minutes to review this, I'll reserve the rest of my questions and analysis then for staff this week.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Beard and Mr. Roberts, for all of your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Next item would be approval of an amended MOU for Second Street Tiger Project, right-of-way acquisition for parcel number five. And this is with Strand Associates, they had some different types of easements that needed to be corrected that were incorrect. So we've received a corrected MOU, which has already been forwarded to all of you, and it has the correct type of easement with a permanent utility with a total area of 3,016 square feet or 0.069 acres. So if there's any questions on that, staff can answer those.
I do have a question, Mayor. This was, I believe, the easement that I questioned at our last meeting, and it turns out, right to question, because there wasn't a correct item in here, but the cover letter still states that we have a 3,000 square feet, but the permanent easement listed in the document is 2,700 square feet. Is that just a, an oversight? I believe that 33,000 was from last time's presentation, and this is a correction. Is that right?
Okay. City manager have an answer for that?
Chuck Knowles is on the line. I'd like Chuck to respond.
Okay, Mr. Knowles?
Yeah, good evening or good afternoon. I apologize for that original MOU. I did not catch the discrepancy in the types of easements or the square footage, so that's on me. I appreciate you all taking another look at this. That, that existing area already has overhead utility lines crossing it, so you could consider that presumptively already an easement for the plant board electrical services. So what we're doing is, we're taking those overhead lines, we're going to bury those, and we also have, I believe, we're going to run a forced main sewer line through that same location. So this parcel, making up parcel five and the 3,016 square feet, is going to be a home to several utilities. We're just basically taking the space that is now being used for overhead lines and adding the underground lines to it.
Chuck, can you confirm the, the square footage? Is it this 3,016 that's on the cover letter, or the permanent easement 2,700 that's in the MOU?
It is a permanent utility easement only, and it is 3,016 square feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
We already have, this wants to be reviewed. Do we need to approve again, then?
We do.
So moved.
Moved back, Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Sauer. Is there any discussion? CNN clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, this item is approved. Next item would be item number four regarding the Second Street Tiger Project, East Main Street curb box inlet project, and would be the approval to reject bid received and to re-advertise the project. If there's any questions, we have staff that can answer that. If not, we'll entertain a motion, whatever your pleasure is.
Will you approve, Mayor?
Moved back, Commissioner Tippett. Second back, Commissioner Waldrich. Is there any discussion?
Just one other.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sauer, go ahead, and then Commissioner Wisman.
Okay. Chuck, what is the reason for the discrepancy? I don't mind rebidding, but why do we have such a low engineer's estimate and a high proposal?
Vaughn and Melton, who did the design on the project and also prepared the engineer's estimate, they were using current market value for the bid items that were in the bid proposal, and so we all are kind of at a loss as to why the bid submitted was so much higher than those unit prices that we use in the engineer's estimate. John, I'm not sure what caused that one bidder to bid so high, but we definitely don't want to accept that bid. We want to re-advertise and try it again. Yeah, my concern is, of course, this is a project that we're doing for the transportation cabinet, and I'm concerned that if we get another set of high bids, that the cabinet's going to have to decide what they want to do with those particular boxes. So I've already, I've already kind of given them a heads up that we're going to have to maybe come to that decision, possibly, if we don't get some bids that are more in line with the engineers later this month.
Yeah. What are the prospects on getting more than one bid?
That, well, again, that's a good question, and I've talked to two people who are very familiar with municipal projects similar to this one, and they say it's just hard to get contractors to bid on these, what I would consider relatively small municipal project. So I'm taking their word at it, that this is just something that you experience with this type of project. We've advertised this on the transportation cabinet's website, where they advertise bid projects. We've also put it out on the city's website and also on the city's bid opportunities. So I think the word is out there, but I'm not sure how we're going to generate much more interest than we've seen.
And we do not have the technical capability of doing it in-house, even though it's a small bid, as you described.
You know, that, that type of project, I'm not sure that the street department possibly could do this project. I'm not real familiar with their capabilities, as I've not really worked with them very closely this last year and a half, but I'll leave that up to Katie and to city manager. But the cabinet wanted us to bid this out as a federal project, because it's part of the Tiger Grant, and that's kind of, that kind of complicated the situation a little bit.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Mayor May? Chuck, you know, back when we started talking about this project, specifically the box inlets, I said that I thought they were a bit of a problem. They, they're not terribly conducive to the driving environment up that hill anyway, and that I had hoped we would be able to pull the sidewalks out slightly and move those as well. Can we start looking at other alternatives, then, that might be a better option for the community, considering the costs that's come back on this? And also, follow-up, I wonder if any of our sewer, traditional sewer contractors might be a better fit somehow?
Well, we have, yeah, Keith Parker suggested we look at a conversation with the transportation cabinet to maybe see if they wouldn't give us a little leeway on requiring any contractor bidding on this project to be pre-qualified with them. That's one of the requirements in the bid proposal. I've checked with some of the contractors that have been doing some of the work locally on East Main and other projects, and none of those are pre-qualified for this type of work. So cabinet's going to have to give us a little leeway, and I plan to have that conversation with them this week, to see if they can give us a little latitude as to who we can put this bid opportunity out for. I'll answer your question, Commissioner Wisman. The scope of this project, of course, was set by the cabinet. This is their roadway, their drainage system. their drainage system. And so, you know, we could have a conversation with them and possibly talk about expanding the scope. But I'm, I'm a firm believer right now, they're in a tough budget situation, and I don't see them expanding scope of too many projects in the near future.
Response to that, Chuck, I was just wondering if there's maybe a, a bit of a cheaper alternative, like a traditional road grate that might, that was better and, and be less cumbersome or something. But I'll leave that to you to have some conversations with alternatives.
Well, you know, I, I don't think there are too many people I've talked to that have disagreed with the fact that these need to be replaced. They're in bad shape from the ground up, so to speak, and that work needs to be done. But again, if the bids don't come in someplace where the cabinet wants to pay for them, then we maybe can look at a more maintenance-oriented improvement that's not going to really fix the situation long term, but will get us by for a while. So that's another option.
Well, while we have the roads torn up, we need to get those replaced. But I realize we have a lot of federal mandates with this project that we have to meet.
That's correct.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you so much. Any others? All right. If not, entertain a motion to reject the bid and re-advertise the project. Move back Commissioner Sauer?
Second.
Second back Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, that item is approved for rejecting and re-advertising the project. Next would be item number five, Capital View Park Lighting, RFP recommendation. City manager?
Yeah, I've, I've spoken to Director of Parks, Sean Pickens, and, and I spoke to one of the commissioners, and we have, we have a reason we think we should reject this and immediately put it back out and try to meet the deadline for the work session. I've contacted an electrical engineer with Strand to see if they can immediately start to assist us in the next few days to get a clear set of specs and bid documents ready. We think this will end up in a cheaper bid and a better product. So I would ask that you all reject these proposals, and we'd notify all of them that there's another proposal coming out very soon, and encourage them to bid on it.
Move to reject the bid and rebid.
Oh, okay. Motion back Commissioner Sauer, second back Commissioner Tippett. Is there any discussion?
Just a little, Mayor. You know, we had directed that something be brought to us for review, and, and to date, I didn't see anything about these. I had wished we'd had some basis to make our, our vote on here to, to do this, but I'll, I'll go along and believe that this is in the best interest.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, I have a question, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I mean, do we expect these folks to forward us something quickly? I guess my question is, you know, how broad and deep a process is this? And I, I know that you will filter this thoroughly. But I guess, is there some sort of timeframe on, when we can expect a return communication from these folks?
Now, we, well, what, the next step is we get the electrical engineer on board, we take all the information together to date, and we get them to help us finalize the specs so we have a clear set of specifications to bid on. The problem we had with the RFP process, it, it's an odd process for an electrical contractor. Most of the time, architects and engineers use that process. And when they submitted, we had some that submitted different scopes of work with a price than the others. And it, it was just, it was not going to be a good project. And, and we, we decided it's in the best interest to put back out. And we're going to expedite it since, since I've learned that this has happened. Like I said, we've already contracted electrical engineer. Also, on June 5th, at 12:05 PM, we emailed all of the responses to the RFP, to the commission, last Friday.
Let's see, that's.
Mayor? Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, you know, I believe, just like Chuck is hoping to get a better bid, a better price, I feel confident that we will get a better product and a better price for the money. And that's why I wholeheartedly support the city manager's recommendation.
Call a question, Mayor. Call the question, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you had a question. Yes, all right.
Call the question.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, this item is adopted. Next item, item number six, Canoe Kentucky Riverboat Tours. This item is to seek commission approval for the Parks Department to enter into memorandum of agreement, MOA, with Canoe Kentucky to offer Kentucky Riverboat Tours based out of Riverview Park. If there's any questions, we have staff available. If not, we'd entertain a motion.
I have a question, Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett?
Uh, Mr. City Manager, in this MOA that we, this is just sort of a, another, a follow-through, an extension of a current MOA. Is that correct?
Sean Pickens is on the line. Laura's shaking her head yes, but I'll let Sean speak to it so I don't mess it up.
Yeah, yes. It, it is basically just continuing what we did last year, Commissioner. And every, smooth is, is still.
So let me ask you this. Is there some sort of lease agreement with these folks about, I, I assume we own the parking lot, right?
Yes, correct.
So is there some sort of lease agreement with these folks in the MOA?
Laura, maybe you speak to that. Not that I know of, no.
Uh, no, the MOA doesn't address the lease for the parking lot. But if you think that's something that we need to take a look at, because it's an issue, we definitely can. This, the reason this is on the agenda tonight, the same MOA we had last year, is just to make sure that they're able to operate by June 15th. But we'll take a look at any lease consideration.
So my, my question really boils down to, do, do we have a standing, a standing, standard operating procedure for these kinds of agreements in these MOAs with businesses that are essentially using city assets?
I think it depends on the particular issue. We are contracting with them to perform this particular service for the city. So, you know, that, that's a little different. We want them doing this. We want them to be able to proceed with, with offering the tours. But if the parking lot is an issue, we could definitely look at that, absolutely. And if we need to.
I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not objecting to, for the MOA. I'm just saying, it seems to me that there are unique situations that are not covered in a, in a broad form. Does that make sense? Where private businesses may want to make use of city parking lots and things like that. So I guess my question to the city manager is, do we do this on a case-by-case basis and then write the MOA? Go ahead.
We do. This, this took away the city's need to maintain a boat and the liability of city employees driving people around on the river in our own boat. You know, there's, there's certain training needs to be had, captain's license, and you know, you have to, you're responsible for everybody out on the water. And this was an avenue to honestly save the city some money and still provide that tourism ability for the city. And this is a special case than most.
Thank you.
I would like to add a comment, Mayor. You know, this industry, tourism, has been hit harder than perhaps any other industry. I've taken the ride on this boat before. They take a van, as you all know, from Buffalo Trace to the parking lot. We're providing a slip and we're providing use of the dock or part of the dock. And I, I just think it's a wonderful program that is well worth it. And we, and we're getting people, you know, again, that, that have a taste of downtown and the Kentucky River. That's all.
Mayor, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, several questions, guys. Last year, we did not follow through with our original contract. So this really isn't a continuation, because we didn't provide the boat slip. I had to personally find a site for their boat to, to launch from because the, the facility that we had previously for our boat did not retain that for Canoe Kentucky's vessel. Have we sorted that out this year? Do we have a, a slip that we are providing? The document says we do.
I'd like Sean Pickens to step in and, and give us an update. I'd like to know about the slip last year as well.
Okay, Ms. Pickens?
Yes. To be, to be honest, I don't know if that's been rectified or not. They did, we were going to just wherever the Nancy Wilkinson was parked at, at Benson Marina. We pulled the Nancy Wilkinson out, and we were going to let Canoe Kentucky have that same slip. But the, the owner of Benson Creek Marina at the time denied that and would not let them use the slip. We weren't really given a good reason why. They just, they just didn't, didn't permit it. So, and Commissioner Wisman, you're correct. I, I believe you did assist them to, I, I believe it was really close down there to Dolly Graham Park, where I think they, where they parked last year.
Yeah, we found a private dock for them to, to retain their vessel at, to keep it in the river. So I was hoping that is rectified.
Yeah, yeah. I am not sure, but I can follow up and I can check on that.
Um, also, Sean, sorry, this, I had another question that was sort of just leaving me a little bit here. Sorry, that was, that was the main thing. If we don't know, if we're providing and paying for a slip, I'm not quite sure how we can approve the contract. But of course, we're on a time crunch here to allow them to operate, and we definitely want to add some park amenities here. My, oh, I do remember my, my other question. Last year, there was discussion after this happened that we would review the, the benefits and, and how it worked. I wrote on it personally. I thought it was fantastic. But has the, the Parks Board taken into consideration to give us a recommendation to continue this? Or have they reviewed anything at all? I was wondering there, or, or park staff, how did they find the, the agreement to operate last year? I assume it went pretty well.
Ecstatic.
Ridership.
Yeah, the, the park staff is ecstatic of this new relationship with Canoe Kentucky and them operating. It's taken a lot of burden and pressure off them. A lot of times, they felt uncomfortable out there doing the tours because they were not licensed captains. And so there was just, they just, they just didn't feel comfortable when, if an emergency situation was to arise. And, and our, our figures that we put together, when we, you know, the maintenance on the Nancy Wilkinson and, and the boat slip and several other things that we had to pay for, going this route, we were, we saved about $3,000, which isn't a, a large amount. But we did, you know, save, and it took the liability off of us, which was the, the main reason for doing it. So.
And it's no longer a free ride for.
Right.
It is a, it's a paid. So there is some, some difference now. Do we know, Sean, of what the ridership was like? What, I, I know we had some water issues last year that they didn't get to go out nearly as often as they'd hoped to.
The feedback, yeah, the feedback that I received was the, the fee that was charged was no issue, and they had more, they had to turn people away because they had so many people reserving to try to get on there.
Well, I, I would like to tentatively approve the contract, but I would like a couple of caveats as part of that. I'd like to see us have an evaluation next fall at the end of the, the season about the ridership and the success of the program and, and what maybe we need to tweak. And I would like to ask staff to bring us back information about the boat slip just as soon as possible. If we need to adjust the contract, we can try to do so immediately, right? But they need to have the approval for the 15th, so I'll, I'll move to approve the contract.
Yeah.
There's a motion. I'll solve it. But it's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second back Commissioner Sauer. City manager wanted to make a comment or ask a question. I'm not sure either one.
Well, on page two, under city responsibilities, we could rephrase item A. It currently says the city will provide and be responsible for all costs associated with the boat slip prepared to use tour vessel not exceed $1,400 annually. Let's just say we will provide $1,400 towards a boat slip. You know, and, and just get the city out of finding it. Just give them a $1,400 stipend. Just reword that portion and approve it as is.
Okay.
If they find a, a free boat slip, they get an extra $1,400. If it's $2,000, they pay six. But I, I bet they'd be agreeable to that.
Okay, that will require a, either we start over or make a motion to amend. I'll do it either way. If you want to just do it quickly, make a motion to amend.
I'm making a motion to amend.
City Responsibility, Section A, the city will provide a boat slip. Hold on. How should we word this? Laura, do you want to chime in? City shall provide.
Sorry about that. I had to, my coffee flew off my desk. Um, yes, so I think $1,400 toward, toward a boat slip. And I think leave it at that, and that can give them the opportunity to go forth.
So moved. Mr. Mayor, did you get that?
So motion to amend back Commissioner Sauer. Did anybody want, did somebody want to be recognized?
Well, help me here, Mayor. We're voting on the amendment.
We vote on the amendment first, and then we'll vote on the final document as amended if that passes. Is there any questions on the amendment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment? I'm going to do a voice. Well, now let's do a roll call because we're on video. It's harder to tell. Just tell this to a roll call, please.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, the amendment is adopted. Next, we'll be voting on the item as amended. So any discussion on the item as amended? All right. If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, the item is adopted. Next.
Mayor, Mayor.
Commissioner Wisman?
Uh, contact Canoe Kentucky to see if that, that change is acceptable and, and let us know something in the next, maybe two days if we need to alter the contracts. Let's not hold up.
Yes, I, I will contact them in the morning.
All right, thank you. Next, number seven, Parks Master Plan Steering Committee. Was that city manager or Parks Director?
Parks Director.
Parks Director. Mr. Pickens?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we sent out a, a word document that had a list of potential recommended groups around the city that could potentially sit on that steering committee. Did all the commissioners, were you able to see that potential list?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So it, it is up for discussion. Those were just some, after talking with Branstad or Carroll, they recommended about a dozen people on the steering committee. They recommended about a dozen people on the steering committee. Now, he didn't say it had to be exactly a dozen. It could be 15, it could be 10. It was kind of just however we felt would be appropriate. But he said normally they're about a dozen. And they he a wide variety of people from different interest groups, from government, from, you know, local areas of the community, and it kind of varies from city to city, obviously. So I kind of shared that list with him and gave him. I'm talking Pat Hoagland, who is our project manager through BCI. I kind of went over that list with him and he he thought it was a very thorough list. It seemed to be a good variety. But we just kind of needed to, you know, for the city commission and for for city staff to just kind of be on the same page of who we wanted on there. So now, moving forward, we just kind of need to come to to an agreement of, you know, how how many do we want on there? From which groups or interest areas do we want? And then we can start figuring out, you know, individual actual individual names that we can reach out to. BCI provided a a draft format of how to appropriately reach out to, you know, each of these groups to try to to ask for volunteers for this. So just kind of wanted to open it up to discussion and get your input.
Mayor?
May I?
Sauer. I'm just now finding that email. Go ahead, Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, just to share, I think it's a good opportunity to share our thoughts about different people and and different organizations. And and I and I would like to share one group. Three leadership groups in the city that come to mind very quickly are the Kiwanis, the Rotary Club, and the Optimus Club. There are three leadership groups of very well-respected people. I would suggest that we allow those three groups, send a letter to their president, and let them pick a person to represent their particular civic club.
Mayor?
Commissioner Tippett. But were you through Commissioner Sauer? I'm sorry.
That's all, those three Kiwanis, Rotary, and Optimus.
Okay. Commissioner Tippett?
Yes. We really need need to make sure that this committee is broad, deep, and diverse. I think we should ask, invite, this isn't a suggestion, the the chairperson of the tree board, who we all know and love, should be a member of that, I believe. We need that orginal input into our parks, I believe. I have a specific person that I think would be an excellent member of this committee, and he would be a representative of the spiritual community. So I I think we just need to make sure we hear from all quarters when we make this this committee. It's just it's it's too important not to do that. And if there's any lesson from this chaos that's going on in our country, it is that we need to be more inclusive and we need to treat everybody with respect, and we need to listen carefully. And in something that's as important to the community as this board and recreation in general, I I think we should make every effort to be as inclusive as we can possibly be. Thank you for hearing me out.
Mayor. Commissioner Wisman. You know, I've thought long for a long time. I've been fighting to get this done, right? Since almost day one. I think we it's imperative that we include as much of the community, young, old, and everything in between to there's that that wonderful park initiative that's going on worldwide, eight to 80, that you consider everyone from an eight-year-old to an 80-year-old person and how they use public facilities. And if you do so in in that manner and consider that broad spectrum of age and and you'll do well for your community. So, you know, I've been envisioning not only a a well-balanced group of folks to to drive the initiative, but also an inordinate number of subcommittees that are developed around initiatives or individual parks themselves that can help inform and and provide some basis for each of our parks to be made better or or initiatives like we've been asked for for fields and and tournament complexes and other things that have seemed to rise to the top over the last year. I might suggest that I have a long list of of tweaks and edits that I thought would be appropriate. And I have talked to Sean at one point about making sure we have representatives that represents the probably five areas of most activity in our parks currently, which would probably be organized towards hiking and trails, swimming, and then mountain biking trails, and then museum heritage preservation, that kind of thing together. But also, I want to make sure we include the kids in this, that we have some youth representatives, some correlation with Kentucky State University and the school boards. I think we need to take a a really broad look at the the whole expanse of our park system and how they can all work interrelate with one another to make sure that what we're doing in the future doesn't replicate activities and and provides the best system we can. So if we might, I might make a suggestion that we each of the commissioners send our staff. Should we go ahead and discuss names and positions? It's sometimes easy to think of people and what they represent to make this committee up. And a question for Sean specifically. Sean, did do we have an indication from Branstad Carroll about an initial meeting with us? Or can we set something up for them? I understood traditional processes that they would come in, meet with the commission, and and develop this on or during that time. But of course, we are limited in our ability to do to do that right now. Did it was some indication of of process that they would like to do? Would they like to have this upfront and some directive? Can you give us any any light on on the process that they would like us to follow this time?
Yeah, I mean, they want to set up individual meetings with with decision makers in Frankfurt relatively soon. You know, three weeks to a month. I mean, so. But with COVID, you know, that may change all this. But typically, they like to get the steering committee together first. That's kind of the first thing that they want to do. And then get the steering committee to approve the first major round of surveys that go out. And we've already seen drafts of those. And then start doing individual meetings with key elected officials and key management staff at the very early on in the process. So in the first month would be your best timeline I could give you.
So would maybe that be the best course of action here is for the commissioners to set up either independent meetings or independent video conferences with Branstad Carroll representatives and give each our each of our perspectives on who should make up the committee and let them pull that information together to bring back to us with suggestions? Might that be this process?
Yeah, I I can ask him that question and see if that's see if that's something that's doable.
Can I answer your questions, Commissioner?
I think so.
All right, city manager has a comment.
The the master plan consultant made it clear that the steering committee is just that. They are steering. The the public input is not limited to their input. Like Sean mentioned, that any group and all groups, there'll be public meetings. They will reach out directly. We can have them reach out directly to Optimus and Rotary. I think all these suggestions are great. I think they would like to get the steering committee going, and maybe we could add more to it. We let you all each one of you all send a name that's not on it be added. They didn't want it to get up around 20 some because they said it's a cumbersome meeting to have 20 people to try to agree to steer the survey questions or whatever. But to move forward to let them, I know we're all anxious to get the master plan going and get the surveys out. I think it will delur. I think they'll have the surveys going out within the week if if we can move forward with maybe the steering committee Sean has. And each one of you all send us a name later you'd like to add. How many are on the list now, Sean?
There's there's 14 that are tentatively on the list. And like I said, this is just a draft. But there's other potentials, you know, representatives from the King Center or Sunshine Center. So it was just it was I didn't necessarily think that that have to be the steering committee. I just wanted to throw out options that we could look at, so.
Yeah. You know, I think we all know of representatives that we want specifically on these committees without creating specific groups for them to represent. I'd rather have some broad generalities, like instead of specifically a walkback representative, someone that represents walking, hiking, biking, that's doing that in our community or DFI, just a downtown representative. I would okay with most of the the list that you have, Sean, just removing those specifications to be more general.
Okay, okay.
We've got to figure out an an end to this process so we can get the steering committee without delaying the master plan process till the next meeting. Or maybe that's what we do. If we don't confirm or if there's more discussion on steering committee and choices, then they won't be able to work on their surveys and get them out until we discuss this next time in two weeks. So just remember that.
Keith?
Go ahead, Commissioner Sauer. Then I want to make a comment.
Keith or Sean, either one. What about limiting each member of the commission to two nominees? And let's have them in by Wednesday, you know, to get going.
I like that idea. If you all all submit two, if we have duplicates, we'll reach back out to those commissioners and say submit. One of you all submit a different one, and then maybe we'll knock off a few of the others. I I think that's a good idea.
Were you through, Commissioner Sauer? I was going to make.
I'm through.
Okay, I was going to say, I worked with Branstad Carroll on the last Parks Master Plan that we did. I could would you allow me to just take a day to call them and and refresh my memory how we did this previously? And 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 that was, you know, 20 years ago, so I know things have changed, but just that process.
Mayor, you ought to be honored.
But I suggest that mayor take control of gathering commission input and relaying that to Sean. If you all give him that authority, we may not have to come back to you all. He can make sure you're all represented if you all found that.
What I was going to say was when we've done things before, when we let everybody submit different names, sometimes we get it's too heavily slanted in one area. I mean, for example, we all may put civic clubs and forget some other. Just a thought. And and we'll get to, you know, commission will have the final say if you all would like to do that. So we can.
Yeah, mayor, that's a better plan.
Can roll quit pretty quick. I don't know. I couldn't tell he was talking. It sounded like a robot.
Commissioner Wisman.
Commissioner Wisman.
All of us putting forward a couple of names. I had thought about that process that we might identify five.
Eric, 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 it's your it's your audio this time.
My audio?
Yeah, mute and they come back on. Now try.
Any better?
Yes.
Strange.
I was just saying that I thought that that's a better alternative than I had considered each of us having two, one or two appointees. And I I'm concerned about the the broadness, if you will, of that we would get out of that. So the mayor or or I would volunteer to coordinate or whoever. Let's just I'd like to move forward with this as quickly as possible, of course, to get this going. We're peak time and summertime, and people are bored and can't use the parks. It's a great time for them to to have input, so.
Yeah, one 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 thing to throw out there. BCI is really wanting to get the surveys out now because with quarantine still happening, their response to surveys is food to food because everybody's at home. The quicker you get the surveys out, the more response we get. Mayor?
Ball game somewhere, right? In a big stadium?
Mayor?
Getting a big, yes, Commissioner Tippett.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move to allow the mayor to work with staff to develop the parameters of the steering committee for the master plan of recreation, park recreation, master plan. I guess that's a kind of a clumsy motion, but that's sort of what I mean, if everybody understands it.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Tippett, second by Commissioner Wisman. The city clerk, did you get that?
What was the motion again? I'm sorry.
Basically, basically allows the mayor basically allows the mayor to work with the staff to organize the process.
Oh, to help the staff organize the process for the steering committee that Eric just gave us an overview on?
Yes. I think if we funnel all the information, you know, that way it will streamline the process, I think.
Sure.
It's my idea.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, that motion is adopted. So we'll work with staff and Branstad Carroll to go as quickly as we can. Maybe hopefully have something by Friday at the latest that you can the commission can review. Is that agreeable?
Sounds good.
Thank you all. I don't know if we need this or not, but do we need? Number eight, upgrades at Capital View Park, including but not limited to lighting, sewer upgrades, upgrades to fields, concession buildings, and restroom facilities. Again, it's a placeholder if we don't need it. Do you do need it? Okay, Commissioner Sauer.
I reviewed our our last meeting and took the suggestion. I think it actually was made by the city manager to send a memo to himself as 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 well as Ms. Ross and Mr. Pickens and Kenny Logston regarding these issues. We've already disposed of the issue of lights. Next on the list was our efforts to get a response from the Department of Water. So I sent that to Mr. Hogston, and if he's available, he could hopefully respond to that, see where we are, give us a little update.
Yes, we submitted that on May 1st to the Division of Water. We still have not heard back from that. We're expecting that at any day. So right now, that's we're kind of waiting on them right now. There's no nothing further that we can do until that is done. But we are preparing our staff to be able to complete the project in-house. So we're already looking at parts, making sure that we know what parts we need. And we haven't ordered anything. We won't order anything until after we get approval back from the Division of Water. But once that's done, we'll go ahead and submit and and start getting the project underway.
I really appreciate that very, very much. I know Commissioner Wisman actually mentioned the idea of in-house again. And I appreciate your concurrence. I know the COVID-19 issue has been a problem for us in the past. If if we do get that okay soon, can you give us an estimate of cost in doing it in-house? And give us a general estimate on about how long the process will take?
Yeah, the general estimate that we got, if we now, this is if we bid the project out and and went that direction, was around $600,000. But since we wouldn't be paying any labor except for our general labor that we have now, we would just have parts and and gravel and thing for the bed for the bedding and everything. So we're going to be right at 120 to 150,000.
That's much better. And a completion date, how many weeks or months, or did I miss that?
We expected to take about two and a half to three months one from the time we start.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One quick question for for Kenny, mayor.
Oh, Commissioner Tippett.
I just didn't realize that you were part of a of a rotten group. Did you play the guitar? That's that's a little levity. Anyway, thanks, Kenny.
Moving moving right along, mayor. At the last one one of our meetings in February or March, I guess I'd address this to the city manager. or March, I guess I'd address this to the city manager or the Parks Director. I mentioned the need for a small extension of the existing restroom facilities between soccer field one and two. Do we have any cost estimates on that project? You know, in my opinion, I, I wrote in the letter, you know, porta potties are just unbecoming for any city, especially the set capital city of Kentucky. And so I, I'd love to see us, I guess I, I'll make a motion that we get some bids on a, on a small extension of the existing restrooms. How about that? Just get bids.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there going to be a second?
I'll second that.
Second that, Commissioner Wiseman. All right, city manager has his hand up.
When we had our initial meeting with the master plan consultant on site, we walked around that building and the restrooms, and we discussed the expansion of those restrooms. But they also discussed if you were going to build new restrooms, it may be better to put it at the base of that hill, still in between soccer fields, but down there where softball can use it. Maybe we add a pavilion with it that has a nice restroom facility. And plus two, they have to give us a size of the restroom facility. You know, how many units do we need is based on capacity, which is based on our future improvements. We'll reach out and get some rough estimates on a bathroom expansion. We may do it on a per square foot basis, and maybe we'll do it based on if we add this many units and this is what we've got. Or maybe we'll let the master plan consultant give us those estimates.
And city manager, city manager, I'm fine with that. Maybe taking a look at both and seeing which is the optimal idea. You know, again, I, I don't want to go back to the horror stories of the regional tournament up there and all the, all the flack we took in the newspaper and social media, you know, and, and, you know, I don't know, city manager, if it would be possible to do either one, you know, in the next six weeks or two months in order to be available for some of those games.
Yeah, and, and in our defense on, on, when they scheduled, they, they've scheduled that high capacity tournament forever with those restrooms, and I agree, they're not sufficient. But we, I, we kind of took it on the chin there, but we didn't schedule thousands of people without also scheduling the appropriate facilities. They've got some nice trailerable facilities that are more than a porta john, and if we can't get it done, and they still want to do that tournament this year, maybe the city can consider helping them with the cost of one of those trailer facilities for restrooms.
As far as I know, the Capital City Classic is going to be there, as well as the All-A Tournament.
Mayor, I would agree with Commissioner Sauer. We need to take a, a look at those restrooms to provide a better facility immediately. It may not be feasible, given the size of the collection reservoir that we have even, but we may be able to do something affordably that would be cheaper than renting porta potties for an extended period of time. I think it's worth us looking at, but also, of course, considering that we're going to hopefully make a massive renovation to that park in general, that we'll build some brand new facilities that will accommodate large crowds.
Keith, one last thing. Keith, could you have some figures back to us by the next meeting, two weeks from now?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll have something ready for you in a couple of weeks on expansion and, well, I would bet the master plan, they, they have some numbers they've used in the past for new restrooms and expansions, and we'll try to get.
Okay. They, they do. Yeah, I'm, I'm almost positive they have those numbers. One note to make, Commissioner Wiseman, you mentioned the capacity of the holding tank. It, it cannot hold what current use down there on a normal day, let alone during a major tournament. So if we, if we expanded those current bathrooms that are there, they would either have to be hooked up to the new sewer system, which we don't have an exact date on that, or some type of a much bigger holding tank would have to be brought in there to be able to accommodate that.
Mayor, may I, just a thought that, that is a little off here, but I think it still applies within the restroom facilities. For a very long time, we've been using one porta potty service, and I, when Sean was hired on, I'd ask Sean, you, for you to look at other alternatives. Maybe it's time we do that, that we particularly bid out the entire service to the community. But let's look at, let's look at some other options in tandem with Commissioner Sauer's suggestion here and motion that, that those trailers are a good option, and, and we can use them probably fairly often. Let's see what else we can find out there to, to meet the need and have those at the ready whenever we need them.
Any other?
Mayor.
Commissioner Sauer.
One, one final thing, and we'll get, we'll get me finished with this. Also, in the letter that I sent out to the previously mentioned department heads and so forth, was Sean, city manager Keith, do we have any other plans, changes, or upgrades to fields or the concession building that we need, that you need to let us know about or, or, or in the offing? Anything else regarding Capital View?
The only thing was, you indicated, and I've also indicated, the deck down there is in bad shape, and, and we'll move towards making repairs to that deck this summer, using in-house staff. Other than that, right now, I, I don't think, just a good cleaning, a lot of times those fields are opened up by the Alliance, and they do a lot of the leaf blowing and cleaning, deep cleaning and pressure washing, and, and the Alliance is only a third of the size it was with the Frank McCarney Washington Hill for longer in it. So it, it, we're going to have to reach out to Frankfurt High and see if they'll be opening and closing the fields and, and, you know, maybe the city has take on increased maintenance to assist with that.
I appreciate your cooperation. That's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any others? All right, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Walberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, that motion is adopted. Now, anything else on this cap of, on Capital View?
Not for me, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. Next item is just a, mainly just a, not necessarily a discussion, but just a notification, just that the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which I'm a member of, has had a working group on police performance and racial justice, and there's a couple of reports that their staff is working with just to provide some information that will be coming down. And I was actually going to save this for the June, late June meeting of our, our regular meeting. But we're looking at two reports that the folks are working with. One is a report of the President's Task Force on Twenty First Century Policing, and the other one is a report developed by our city, U.S. Conference of Mayors Working Group and Police Chiefs. And there's some good recommendations in there that will be reviewed to see how those can help in communities across the country with, with, in light of what's been going on. So these were in place, and they're very timely with what's going on now. So I just wanted to provide that information. We had that call, it was at three o'clock on Friday, so I knew I wouldn't have enough information to really provide. There certainly wouldn't have any recommendations yet. There are some recommendations that came after the situation in Ferguson in 2014 that we feel are relevant today. Thankfully, this is an, an ongoing conversation that can be had, and once those recommendations are provided, we will happily share those. Be glad to answer any questions, and if not, we'll just, it was mainly, mainly information is all. All right, next item, discussion of ordinance improvements and future activities slash policies to support Frankfurt Police Department in lights, in light of recent Black Lives Matter protests and response. I know Commissioner Walberg, should you want to be recognized to discuss this item?
Actually, I was giving the, I wanted this to be discussed and bring in police chief, just to discuss on where we are, allow them a time to have their voice, as I think it should have been on the agenda and without me having to put it on there, given the circumstances, and we just had a rally. So I, it gives them a time just to let the community know what they've already done, what they're doing, what they're continuing to do as far as bias training and things of that nature. So I may have a little bit to add, but just for Chuck to share with us and allow the police to have a voice, because they were not, they were not given a voice at the rally to, to be able to communicate to our community. And I really wanted that, but the group didn't really want that so much, and I want to give that voice to him now.
Chief, on the call, from what I understand, if he did, did.
Yeah.
Can, can you? There you go.
Yes, sir. And, and I appreciate this opportunity, because we want the community to know that we are continuously working to serve our whole community. You know, I watched, I watched all the videos I could find on the George Floyd murder, and that's what it was. Just trying to figure out why, why did that officer act that way? Why did, why did those other officers not do something? And, and I couldn't, you know, there was no excuse for it, and that's what we found. And, you know, I, what I want our community to know is that these incidents and these things that have happened in other places don't represent our department. Our department has been working hard with our community for several years, trying to build better relationships. It's been a focus of mine to continue building on those relationships, and, and personally to have a better understanding of what minority communities go through. I'll admit, I don't, I don't understand. I, I don't know. You know, this past semester, some of you know this, I had the opportunity to teach my first course at KSU. It was an in-seat course, and I just saw with my, through my discussions with my students, distrust that they have in the whole criminal justice program, not, or system, not just the police, but the courts and corrections. And it, it gave me some insights, and I hope to continue to build on that as I continue teaching there. But we have to work to find solutions. Speaking of KSU, you know, you all approved the MOU last month to continue in the, what they, what's called, Please Call Me Mister. It's a after-school program for minority youth. And that's one of the many things that we're doing. Training wise, the police department has been taking part in a lot of, I say a lot, when it's scheduled, implicit bias training that is been offered by KSU, and it's Iowa. You know, I've, I've been able, the opportunity Ed Poe has invited me to sit in on discussions hosted by Focus on Race Relations, and it just helps you to understand that different point of view that you obviously weren't raised with, or maybe you didn't, you just didn't see as you grew up. And, and we also continue to train our, our officers on communication and de-escalation and, and crisis intervention. We review our policies regularly to make sure they're best practices, and that's part of the reason that we are accredited, is to make sure our policies are up to standards, where they should be. Honestly, I look at these states that say they're enacting new laws or new policies, and I'm, I'm confused on why those aren't already in place. I don't, I don't understand it. Each use of force that we have is documented, and it's reviewed all the way up the chain. It all, it comes all the way up to me, so that we can identify problems if there are any. And we also just started participating in the FBI's newly-created national database for police use of force. So hopefully we'll get some more accurate statistics and understanding of what's actually happening. As you know, also, we have our body cameras that we finally received, and that was, honestly, that was a longer process than I expected. And we are issuing those out, and those should all be issued out by the end of the month. And hopefully that will continue to build trust with, with us and the community as officers, as we serve. And, and the policies are very clear on when officers have to use them, when they should be using them, how to protect people's privacy, all of that. So we'll make sure they understand that. And then a big one, we need to represent our community inside our ranks. We need to look like our community. So one of my primary focuses since being hired in as chief is recruitment, hiring, and retention of minority members of our community. Now, we've only had one hiring process since my promotion to police chief, so I've not had an opportunity to see, see any fruits from our work. But, you know, I, I, and the city solicitor's been assisting me with changes that I want to make to our hiring process, which are all based on ordinance. I feel like we're missing out on a lot of good applicants, because the way our process is set up, if they apply after we've started, we can't, there's no way for us to incorporate them in. So we're, we're looking at those kind of changes. And, you know, I just, again, we're, we're working, those are just a few things. Some of the things we're trying to do, the things we already are, already have been doing, and I'll admit, I don't have all the answers. I don't, and, and I need to work with others. Ed Poe has been, has been great, and I need to have more discussions with him. I hadn't talked to my class, just trying to help them understand what they needed to do as young students, as young minority members of our community. And that was really good, and I, I want to have those discussions. I want to help find those solutions. And that's, that's my goal as the police chief and, and as our department.
Yeah, and Chief, I want to, you may or may not know that last week I received an email that had some questions about some of our policies. I forwarded that to the Assistant Chief and also through our city attorney, who addressed these questions. We got those answers today. The, the reason that they couldn't have been, couldn't have gotten back quicker, I know that our folks were all busy last week working on the march, which went off well. But we'll be resending these back to the individual who requested this information. And we can also be happy to make this available too, just so people know that we do not use or train for chokeholds. That's use of deadly force. So if there's a deadly force situation, that's, that's what that is for. And any type of excessive force is something that we do not condone. Any excessive force would be required to be immediately have the intervention of other officers to, to stop that. So these things are already in place here at, at FPD, and we thank those of police administration and other administration with the city for making sure that those policies are in place and up to date. So I will, I appreciate the time it took to get those questions answered, quite a few. But any, any commissioners are more than happy, we can, we can provide that information as well. And again, this will be an ongoing, Commissioner Wiseman, this be an ongoing conversation, I'm sure, but obviously, in, input from everyone will be appreciated. Commissioner Wiseman?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to applaud our police department. I was very proud Friday during the march that, that all of us were walking with them and, and members of our police department, Assistant Direct, Directors were engaging with the community and taking photographs. And, and I, I think Frankfurt has long led the way and, and continues to to, to really question our own biases, if you will. And, and this community is good about having these discussions, and we should continue to regularly have discussions. There's never a perfect system, and we, it's incumbent upon all of us, and of course, the members of this commission, to, to always question and, and review and, and thoroughly consider our, our actions and, and what we're, the ways we engage the community. And, and I told Chief Adams at the award ceremony this, earlier this year, that I've been really proud of his, his leadership in our department to, to bring a new day to that department, if you will, and, and engage our community much, much more and not shy away from, from questions or difficult topics.
You haven't even named your top three.
Somebody chime, who's chiming in?
I can't hear it. So I just wanted to say, say that and thank everyone.
But somebody, I can't, I couldn't tell who, somebody want to be recognized. Oh, he just was, actually, sorry.
The trace of your audio is cutting out. I think you were trying to speak.
The treacherous audio is cutting out. I think you were trying to speak.
Commissioner Walters?
No, I wasn't. I'm yelling at my.
Oh, okay, we can, I can't tell. I'm sitting in the ELC, and I've got a laptop and two screens on, on all sides here, and it's all difficult to. Yeah, Commissioner Walters, do you have further?
Oh, yeah, I was going to comment. I was waiting after Eric, but I was yelling. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Commissioner Wisman, were you, did you have further? Okay, Commissioner Walters? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walters, did you have further?
Yeah, sorry. Hello? Sorry, we have kids running all over our house right now. So this is what happens when you work from home and you come to a meeting. Um, anyways, what I was going to say, um, was just to back up, um, Chief Adams. I, I truly, truly appreciate it, um, him, you know, just being communicated, uh, being able to communicate with me, um, even though he was gone on vacation. He was very responsive, um, and truly appreciate, sort of piggyback on what Eric was saying, on how our, how our police department, as well as the sheriff's office, really interacted with the crowd. They were there. You could tell that they were truly genuine, um, and wanted to be there, wanted to be supportive. Um, and as also Eric said, that, you know, in our community, there are maybe not as many biases as other places, but we do have hiccups here and there, and we just have to work on those as a community. And we have amazing groups, like Mayor said, with, um, Ed Poe, which is for Frankfurt, Together Frankfurt, that people are truly working, and we are doing so much, um, so much, I guess, better in that area, I think. Um, we still have work to do, but, um, I just truly appreciate the community coming together because that really, truly warmed my heart. And I think this is something we need to continue to talk about. I will continue to work with Chief, uh, Adams, as well as Ms. Ross on a few things and working forward, um, as I'm working on some things now. And so just want to make sure that we keep this, um, in the forefront of our vision because, you know, we don't want it, we don't want it to fall asleep this time. It's time for action, and we just want to make sure that our community and our police officers are given that right to let them know. And I had a lot of questions for my community over the past few weeks, as the mayor said, he had some questions. You know, a lot of people may not watch our meetings, definitely given this situation of COVID and watching them online. So, you know, a lot of people didn't know that we just signed off on the Mr. Program and things of that nature. So, you know, being able to have that moment for him to speak right now is truly huge for the community to be able to hear that and hear what we're doing, and that we're not doing things just in reaction, that we're being proactive as a police force. So I truly appreciate them and our first responders. So, thank you, Chief.
Any other commission before we move on?
Uh, Chief?
Sauer.
Conversation with the chief for a second. Um, Chief, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I received a call this afternoon from former city commissioner Dawn Hale, who used to be involved in a COPS advisory committee. And she, and you know, I think this is really appropriate and, and timely. Uh, we're getting in, certainly into warmer weather, and perhaps we could look at our, our force as far as the bicycles go, as far as the skagway goes, because back in her, back in her day, I don't want to date her, but back in her day, you know, uh, the police department at that time really, uh, really spread itself out into the community. That was a real emphasis back then. Mayor, you were on the commission, I'm, I'm sure, if not, if not mayor at the time when Dawn was there. Um, I know you were, you were mayor. But, uh, anyway, I, I would just encourage, uh, the police department to take a look at that again. Uh, I know we try, can we do a better job of getting a few more people out on bicycles, on skagways, and out into the community to get that one-on-one feedback, to build trust, which is important in this day and time, and to get to know, uh, the residents of the community even better. That's all.
Mayor. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna date myself here. Uh, many of you are probably too young to remember the Clinton-era programs that were in, uh, vogue back then. And, uh, we, we had a couple of our officers, of course, I've lived in South Frankfurt all of my life, and, uh, Mayor, you probably remember Officer Rivers and Officer Riley. Uh, they absolutely made, made tremendous networking and connections in the community. They were there. They invested their time in the community, and the kids just were, um, they could not wait to see them and talk to them, and they, they just did a great job of, I guess that's called community policing. And that's probably what Mrs., Ms. Hale was referring to, because I think she was a South Frankfurt resident as well. But they were in the schools, uh, they were developing relationships, and most of all, trust, uh, with the citizenry. Uh, and I, I don't know what has happened since the Clinton era. Uh, and I'm not saying that it's, that it's worse in our community, but it's worse other places. Uh, so I, I think if, you know, if, if we can take those small steps and get, get the, get the officers in the community and building those relationships, we will avoid the problems that these other folks have had. Uh, so I just want to, you know, uh, add on to what Commissioner Sauer's comments were, and, uh, yes, Ms., Ms. Hale was correct in her recollection of that.
Well, to further answer that, that was part of a grant that we got in 1996. It was called Safe and Drug-Free Schools. Uh, that program actually evolved into what is now, uh, the ASAP, part of the ASAP program picked that up. It was Safe and Drug-Free Schools. We got that from the Department of Education, uh, a lady named Ann Seppenfield, uh, got that, helped us get that. She worked in the Department of Education, and then we appointed, uh, a board. We had a board together that dealt with situations in South Frankfurt. So we had Officer Riley and Officer Rivers, who were the two officers that did that program. And you all are right, uh, being in the community on bikes and just out on, sitting on folks' front porch. My wife and I would go down many times in the neighborhoods and, um, talk with residents, and people would, uh, would talk to us about all types of issues. And again, it comes, it comes down to resources, and we had, uh, uh, the bike patrol started, and we, it requires a, a certain number of officers to be able to keep that program going. It's something that I believe absolutely those of you that remember and lived in South Frankfurt know the effectiveness of that program and the, uh, uh, relationship we had with the neighborhood and the young people in the program, uh, and in the neighborhood. So to get back to that, um, I'm sure the chief would, would say and echo this, that it will take manpower to do that, and that's something that if there's interest, we can certainly, um, review that with all of our staff to determine how many, uh, officers that would take to be, uh, on each shift and how much that would cost to do another program like that. But it was very, very effective.
Mayor. Mayor.
Commissioner Tivitt.
Do, do you have to remember, uh, what the, uh, numerical value of our police force was i- in the, you know, late 90s and the early 2000s, and how that compares to what we, what we do now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had quite a few more, and I think the best thing to do is to compare, if we just ask for staff to provide us with what our peak level, staffing level was and what it is currently, then you could review that. It, it was quite a bit higher.
If I may, it was, um, when I was hired, I was hired part of that grant, actually, the COPS grant. I was a young bike officer all those years ago, and, uh, it, it, it was, it was very good. You know, you got out, you actually got to talk to all, uh, the citizens, the community members walking around their neighborhoods, whatever, and it was very good. It was, uh, helped a lot. But, um, when I was hired in 1999, we had that, we made a total of 73 officers. Uh, so currently I'm allotted 62. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at.
Did, I, I think at one point, did we get up to 75 at one point?
That I know of, it was 73, but, you know, it's, it's very rare that we're ever actually fully staffed, so.
Right, that was the problem.
Right.
So I think that commission would like to get, if I'm hearing everybody, seeing heads shaking, that can we get, uh, staffing levels for comparison from, uh, 1996, I guess, to 2020 current?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, you know, I was, uh, in middle school when that program was taking place to, to date everyone, right? Um, and I remember some of that, um, but I think it's imperative. We, we've got to take a really critical look at our budget this week, um, and prioritize what's, what's the most important and the most effectual, um, because we've been talking about this for, for the last year and a half, that we desperately need to increase our number of officer allotment, um, to be able to do the program and engage with the community at the level we need to. So, um, I'd like to see those numbers right away, and we, and influence our, our budget this coming week.
All right, any others?
Uh, Mayor, is, uh, we've talked about in the past, the COPS program, uh, the COPS grant, and, uh, I think last time I heard, it was tied up in legislation. Chief, uh, do you know where we are on that program, that grant?
It, um, it has been freed, uh, uh, I'm not sure that the actual program is open for application at the moment, but, um, uh, the problem with it is that it requires a match, and, um, due to the retirement costs and the increases that will be contributing to that over the next five years, we didn't financially think it was a wise idea to try and commit, uh, to that, those salaries, because in that fourth or fifth year, we have to pay the whole salary. And I just don't know that the money's going to be there, especially after this pandemic.
Yeah. On the other hand, we ought to be in a lot better shape five years from now. But, um, something to, something to explore.
All right, thank you all. Um,
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for getting that, you know, late submission out. Uh, I thought it was something that had already been on there. I apologize, you know, it came out on Friday sort of late, but it was still time to get it on there. So thank you to Shemay and Laura and Keith for working to get that put on there, and, and things may not have worked out right, but I apologize for any wrongdoings that may have came your way, or wrong sayings that may have came your way. So I truly apologize that and didn't want you to, didn't want to put you in that situation. So, but thank you for getting it through.
I, I don't know, do we need number 11 recycling program update since we, no?
I was hoping to be able to make some action or directive tonight, Mayor. We, we've been talking about this for a year, and we need to come up with a solution to better address our community's recycling and their desire to do so. So, um, I'll review, and hopefully we'll have it back on the, uh, the next, uh, work, our meeting agenda.
Go ahead, go ahead, City Manager.
I agree. I, I think we, as we discussed earlier, we have, uh, Katie bring this up in the budget discussion, and, and we put that alongside, uh, police and fire requests and public works requests and all the other budget requests, and we'll make a decision Friday during the budget process.
Frankfurt Independent Schools reimbursement. I think we got a memo or an email, maybe right before the meeting. I'm not, or I'm not sure who sent it. I, I saw it briefly when I was trying to.
If, uh, if I may, if I may have the floor, Mayor.
Commissioner Tivitt.
Um, I asked this item to be on the agenda. It's timely. Um, if we want to, if this board in this body wants to address the inequities and the inequalities that, uh, germinate into civil unrest, then it is incumbent on us to, to bash barriers down, uh, and, and help children and students who are disadvantaged and, um, held back by poverty. It was the intent of this commission, and the commission before that one, to micro-target the poorest of the poor kids in our city. We did that, and we made an MOA with the Frankfurt Independent School District. It was never about giving one school district money and another school district being shut out. It was always about trying to address poverty and finding kids, uh, and giving them opportunities to use technology to ameliorate learning gaps and, and technology gaps and achievement gaps. Uh, for some reason, uh, monies that I think are desperately needed in that area have not flowed appropriately to the city school district. Uh, I'd like to change that. I don't know what the obstacles are. It's language in the MOAs or whatever it is, but I want to bash those barriers. I want to obliterate, obliterate those barriers a- and try to get as much money targeted to those children as we possibly can. So I've got, I've got a motion. I'd like to make it, uh, and then we can enter into discussion as a board. It's a body. Uh, so, so I'll make the motion. I move to disperse the balance of monies invoiced in the 2017 MOA with the Frankfurt Independent Schools, uh, into the 2019 MOA irrespective, irrespective of an Attorney General's opinion, which I think is superfluous. Again, we are micro-targeting, uh, areas of extreme poverty and providing opportunities for kids to learn. So that's my motion.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Wisman. All right, any discussion?
Do, do we have?
Go ahead.
Do we have a dollar figure, uh, on this?
Only anecdotally. I'll let the city manager, uh, talk in a second, uh, if I may have the floor, Mayor. Uh, as I understand it, there were monies, uh, available that we had committed, that this board had committed in the first MOA, uh, that were invoiced, and I, I don't know why they weren't dispersed, and I really don't care. Um, it, it just, it, it seems to me that we should allow those, those invoicings to, uh, to flow, those monies to flow, uh, and we should remove the barrier language, uh, in the present MOA that hasn't been, I guess it hadn't been enacted, but it needs to be enacted. So I guess part of my motion is, is for us to make sure that the 2019 MOA with the school district is ongoing and enacted, and we allow the monies that we committed in the first MOA to go in, to flow into the, the newest MOA. And, uh, I, I just think it's the right thing to do. You know, um, we, we should just create, uh, areas of opportunity for these children. Um, it's just the right thing to do. Thanks.
Andrew had some, were you going to provide some information?
Mayor, I was going to just explain what, if I could, the, um, for the general audience that might be viewing, this is the program that the previous commission created, and we've now perpetuated to provide, um, the very lowest-income students the ability to have internet access, which is obviously, uh, we were ahead of the, the need, and, and the need still persists to, um, to provide this service for our community. And I, I actually think we need to start looking at some, some real, um, ways to, to change, um, our systems, given that we have, uh, the Frankfurt Plant Board as a, as a subset of the city, um, that we can find another way to do this. But I think it's imperative that we, we go ahead and get this MOA done, um, use the, the rest of those funds to provide, to meet the need, and then, um, start talking about other ways that we can continue to service.
Okay. Well, City Manager, were you going to add something?
Yeah, I would, uh, I think it's very honorable to want to help these children. Um, and I think, uh, I think what happened, just an update on the last MOA, it was actually run through KCDC because it was written as an economic development MOA to avoid legal issues with one taxing authority funding another taxing authority. And, uh, we, uh, it's very honorable, and what I would suggest, Scott, is you challenge staff to, uh, work with, uh, Dr. Barber to come up with another MOA that will break the muster of the, uh, the taxing authorities, what we're allowed to do, and meet the intent of what you want to do. The 2017 MOA is gone, the 2019 MOA expires end of this month, and it was conditional upon Attorney General approval. and it was conditional upon Attorney General approval. I think trying to utilize those documents, well, I don't think we can. I think, I, I, I very clearly hear what you want and I would like to work Dr. Barber and Laura and see if there's language, if we can research language to do exactly what you all want to do. You know, I don't, I don't think we can use the old agreements. I'm not trying to be obstructionist, but I, I just don't think it's possible. And everything was invoiced by Frankfurt High that met the requirements of the 2017 agreement was paid to the Frankfurt Independent School System. You know, we've learned some lessons on how that was written, some guidelines they had to meet to invoice they couldn't meet. They thought more people would be interested in the program. Maybe that all can be tweaked, but if it's your ultimatum prerogative to enter into a legal agreement, Franklin Independent, to disperse $80,000, $100,000, let us try to figure out a legal way to do that. You all have made it clear. That's what I'd like to.
Oh, Mayor, may I have the floor?
You go ahead, Commissioner Tippett.
I'm just pretty certain, I'm not a lawyer, but I have access to a bevy of lawyers in my family. I'm just pretty sure we do not need an Attorney General's opinion for this.
It's your ultimatum prerogative. What, do you want us to write a check to Frankfurt Independent Schools? Or how do you want us to do it?
No, no. Uh, well, then you're, then I, I'm willing, yes, Keith, I agree that there has to be a framework for that. But it should not be cumbersome and it should not be onerous. And the school district should not have to turn flips to have the monies dispersed to them with, you know, couched in legalities, you know. I would say nebulous legalities. Let's do what we can and if you want to meet with Dr. Barber's staff, I'm for that. But, but let's, let's at least vote to remove the language of the Attorney General's opinion. I don't think that's necessary. It's superfluous. And let's, let's find a way, a challenge staff to find a way to make this work. It is just too important to the community. It's, it's what we're here to do. We're here to improve the community. So if we plant these seeds of opportunity, you know, 25 years down the road, we're not going to see the kind of civil unrest if we, if we provide ample opportunities for equality to be reached. And we won't have to worry about equal protection, equal justice in the 14th Amendment because we have done our jobs of helping obliterate these barriers. And I just, I cannot tell you how strongly I feel about this. We cannot allow language to keep us from helping the community. Find the language, okay, guys? Find the language, make it work.
I, I thank you. I, if we just remove the Attorney General reference, it still expires into June. We'll get started with it. Let me work with Dr. Barber, figure out language they can meet, bring something back to you all for review, if that's what you all want to do.
Well, Keith, you know, I'm gonna rely on you, but I don't know where my motion stands, Mayor. You're the proponent here.
Your motion's still on the floor.
Is there a second?
I seconded it already.
Let me read back the motion. Shereen.
You said, read it back?
Please.
I can probably read some of it. So just, just, the motion was to disperse the balance of the money from 2017. And the 2015 MOA?
2017 to 2019.
Oh, I am sorry. And the 2019 MOA should be ongoing and active in respect of the AG's opinion. I kind of had a little break.
Irrespective of an AG's opinion and, and to, to give the City Manager his, you know, his due here, we, we would require, we would require in the motion for the school district to provide that there's not conflicts in the dispersal of the monies. In other words, they would not be paying for teacher salaries or gasoline for buses, okay, or paying bus drivers, that kinds of things, or instructional materials that are not germane to what the, what the MOA, the spirit of the MOA. And we all know what the spirit of the MOA is, okay? It is to provide equal opportunity and access for, for poor kids. So if you guys can understand that motion and take it in its broadest fashion and then apply the language, it would thrill me. Ms. Ross? Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
I think what we want to do in your motion is to direct the City Manager and Dr. Barber to come up with the appropriate act, appropriate language to get the job done.
I agree, I agree. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner.
Call for question on the motion.
Mayor, can I be recognized for one second?
Yeah, I was gonna actually make a statement too, real quick, but go ahead. We're probably gonna say the same thing.
That everybody work with me as well. I am the city attorney and I will do my very best to make this work, but I do expect you all work with me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ross, of course I meant to include you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Of course, Ms. Ross.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, the thing we have to be cognizant about, even though we passed this motion, we're still gonna have to come back. Probably, not probably, we will have to come back and, and do a new MOA because this one is going to expire in June regardless. And we could always say that we can, there's so many different ways, different ways to do it. We say we're gonna extend it, if you want to do that, or we just come up with a new one. We'll leave that up after we dispose of this particular motion, but I just wanted to say that as a point of order. Just that this motion will remove the requirement to talk with the Attorney Gen, with the Attorney General, OAG. And then since this MOA is going to expire in June, we will definitely need to come back and do something to either extend this one as is or come up with a brand new one. So if, now the other question is Commissioner Waldridge.
Yes, I just wanted to add that for the City Manager and for Laura Ross, when you guys were speaking with Barbara, that you asked for a breakout of how, from the moment when I first came aboard a city commission, I know I was pushing this because I didn't just want to focus on Frankfurt Independent Schools as though, you know, they are, there are a great, there is a great number of poverty families that go there, that attend in that district. But also there's other impoverished families also that are going to our county schools, but they live in our city limits. And I remember bringing that up. I just want us to know, I know that when we brought it up the first time, we were like, well, they didn't use all of their money because I went and had a meeting with Gary over at Frankfurt Plant Board and he said that only 27, I want to say maybe, people had signed up or maybe 21 people had signed up for this service and that's why there was so much leftover money. So I would like to know from Dr. Barber, from that 21 perspective, how much has that grown? What is their true need? What is the true need? I know that since COVID has happened, the need for internet is greater in the circumstances of NTI work and things of that. I understand that, but I would like to know before just throwing a whole bunch more money over there and things. I would like to know what that need is and have we increased from, from the 2017 to the 2019 MOA? Where has that 21 number started? Now where has it gone? And where does he perceive that that need is beyond whatever that number is in 2019? So I'd like to have that information in front of me as well to show that there is a desire, a need that needs to be filled and what that gap is from 2017 to 19, from 19 until present time.
Okay, any, any further discussion before, Commissioner Wisman?
One question, I, I, we never received an update. Did KCDC refund the, the final money to us? We were waiting on that for some time and Keith, can you answer that from the original MOA?
I sent it over as soon as we made the formal request.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Waldridge?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, that item's adopted. And just, just to be clear, on this topic, we will most likely have to come back and, and either draft a new MOA from scratch or extend, take the same language from this one and, and tweak it, however, whatever the pleasure of the commission is. All right, that includes, I'm sorry, discussion, we have the discussion, sorry.
One related on that, I had asked some time ago and maybe let's pick it up again, but I, I feel like there's potentially an option that we can provide this service in partnership with the Frankfurt Plant Board, maybe more effectively than we can through the school district. And I'd like to maybe ask a city solicitor, Mrs. Ross, to, to review how we might be able to do that since they are our own subset. I realize that may not provide some of the hotspot connectivity that the school district has been using, but since the, the Plant Board does provide internet service for the entirety of the city now finally, it, this would seem that there's a better option there that we can even expand to meet the need of a broader spectrum of the city than, than we are previously. If I could make that request for information.
So there are two things. Commissioner Waldridge asked for information, Commissioner Wisman asked for additional information. So hopefully, if that needs to be clarified, we can do so, but staff, please be advised that appropriate staff will direct whatever additional staff needed to get those items addressed for the two commissioners and the whole board, please. Hopefully that's clear. All right. We do have a discussion of the tentative agenda, so are there any questions on the tentative agenda for June voting meeting? I guess they're all voting meetings technically.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sauer.
Item number eight with the Frankfurt Sewer Department Amendment Number Five to Professional Services. I've got several questions about that that I'd like to share with the, the City Manager as well as the Director of the Sewer Department. That, that is one that I want to just earmark. Also, number three, I can't, I can't help but express my appreciation to the Public Works Department, Katie and Sarah, as well as Ray Richardson. Item number three has to do with the street resurfacing plan. A lot of streets that were in bad need of repair are going to be fixed this summer. And, and that's all, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right, then, next item would be to go into an executive session.
Shall I read it? I'm getting great at that.
Yes, please.
Mayor, I move we go into executive session for KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection B for deliberations on future acquisition of real property related to economic development and expansion of city services where publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. I'm gonna, again, ask the clerk to please call roll. You're muted.
Waldridge?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, we are going into executive session.